This conference will now be recorded.
All right, guys, so we'll call this meeting to order. All times on this agenda are approximate. Consideration items may require more or less time than is scheduled. Items on the agenda may be taken out of order. The public body may combine two or more agenda items for consideration, and the public body may remove an item from the agenda or delay discussion relating to an item on the agenda at any time. Public comment is designated for discussion only. The public has the opportunity to address the commission on any matter not appearing on the agenda. However, no action may be taken on any matter raised until the matter itself has been specifically included on the agenda as an item upon which action may be taken. Additionally, public comment may be heard on any item listed on the agenda. Persons are invited to submit comments in writing and/or attend and make comments on any agenda item at the Lander County Commissioners Board Meeting. All public comment may be limited to three minutes per person at the discretion of the commission. Please note that the public body may interrupt the open meeting and exclude the public for the purpose of having an attorney-client discussion of potential and existing litigation which is pursuant to NRS 241.0153B2. So I'll call the meeting to order. Patsy, would you lead us in the pledge?
Thank you. I'd like to lead this.
To the fight of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll have a moment of silence. Lander County Commissioners may break for lunch from 12:00 PM to 1:15 PM. Any agenda item may be taken out of order, may be combined for consideration by the public body, and items may be pulled or removed from the agenda at any time. Commissioners report on meetings, conferences, and seminars attended. We'll start with you, Patsy.
Thank you. No, I don't, but I do have a NACO meeting tomorrow, so we'll report next time.
Okay.
I do not.
Okay, Jer?
I have nothing to report.
Mike? Okay, good. We'll move into staff reports on meetings, conferences, and seminars attended. Any staff reports? Okay. We'll move into public comment for non-agenda items only. Is there a public comment? Okay, we'll move into our consent agenda. All matters listed under the consent agenda are considered routine and may be acted upon by the Board of County Commissioners with one action, without extensive discussion. Any member of the Board or any citizen may request that an item be taken from the consent agenda, discussed, and act upon separately during this meeting. Consent agenda materials are available at the Lander County Clerk's Office for viewing, and copies are available for a nominal charge. One, approval of August 24th, 2023 Agenda Notice. Two, approval of August 10th, 2023 Meeting Minutes. And three, approval of payroll change request. We're gonna need to pull item one because it was worded incorrectly. It's worded on the agenda as June 30th, 2027, but it should read August 31st, 2026.
I didn't receive any minutes. Did you have minutes?
I didn't receive any either.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we approve the consent agenda, which will be number three.
Okay, we have a motion. Is there a second? Motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. And do we have a motion on one?
So we amended? We're amending what part of the agenda?
Where it reads the date, so it's item three, where it reads the date, June 30th, 2027, it's supposed to read August 31st, 2026. Is that correct?
I'll make a motion we approve the amended agenda.
Okay.
A second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, and I'll abstain from it. Okay, so we're going to move to item one. Commissioners, for discussion of possible actions, approve, disapprove, payment of bills. We're gonna pull check number 220873. Patsy, do you have any checks on this one?
No, I can't.
Well, I'll make a motion we approve the remainder of the bills.
I'll second it.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
I'll also make a motion that we approve check number 220873.
Okay, we have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
And a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, and I abstain from it. It's me to my employer. So we'll move into item two. For discussion and possible action to approve, disapprove, the renewal of the interlokal contract between the State of Nevada Division of Public and Behavioral Health, DPBH, Community Health Services Program, and Lander County. Okay, do we have a representative with the state here?
I believe Nicole is on phone one. Nicole, you'll need to unmute yourself.
Good morning. My name's Brisa Virgin, and I'm also with Community Health Services.
Okay, so are there any questions from the board here? Okay, so I do have some questions, and they're probably, bill's probably directed towards you somewhat. And then, so the first one is on page 513 of the contract, item 21, which is federal funding. In the event federal funds are used for payment of all or part of this contract, the parties agree to comply with all applicable federal laws, regulations, and executive orders, including without limitation, the following. And they lay it out. So my concern is that, number one is, do we have any say in whether or not we accept those federal grants? Because when you accept those federal grants, there's gonna be strings attached, and I don't know if it necessarily would, it might not be something that every one of these board members up here might be in favor of. So that would be my first question.
We...
Because I don't wanna assign something to where we're, basically, that's what we're doing. And that, you know, that kinda...
I get your concern. The problem is that, as a practical matter, federal government knows how big it is, and it doesn't move. So is that a basis that you could decide to reject the contract? Yeah, are you gonna get another contract without that in it? Probably not. Because the state, if they're using federal funds, or if they decide they want to, they're gonna do that. They'll figure something else out. I mean, you're gonna cause a problem. My experience tells me, and I think your common sense tells you, that they don't move.
Well, and then, I do agree with what you're saying, but that's why I had stated, would we have the right to not accept those funds? But what you're saying is that the state were to accept them.
But the problem is the state...
That's the problem. The state, if they're agreeing to it, we're kinda strapped by what they're agreeing to, and we might not necessarily agree with that.
Correct.
I need you to read that statute. Is Dr. Ross on?
Dr. Ross is supposed to be on the phone.
This was just sent to me.
Okay.
Dr. Ross, are you on the phone?
He was in clinic today, so he might.
I told him it might be around 9:15.
He usually puts his name, and he's not, I don't see his name. So unless he's one of these callers, he needs to unmute himself.
I'll email him really fast, 'cause I told him around 9:15.
And I did text him, too.
So that's my concern, is that we have a state agency that can accept money that affects our county directly that we would have no say over. So that's my concern.
I don't know that we did this exemption, so Dr. Ross, I just wanted you to read it.
But is that clause in there for if we're paying for the contract amount with federal funding? 'Cause we're not...
I don't know. It's just, it's page 5 of 13, item 21.
I don't think we did it.
...for payment of all or part of this contract.
I think we need to go over the attachment, too, with the scope of work and the services.
Yeah, and I was gonna ask some questions in that.
Okay.
So anyway, that's my concerns. I'll just voicing them. And then...
He said he's dialed in but muted.
He needs to unmute himself. Does he know what caller he is? Hold on. Tell him he can speak.
Can you hear me?
Got it.
Yep, we can hear you.
Hold on.
Muted. Unmuted.
Okay.
Sounds like I'm unmuted.
Dr. Ross, did you hear my question or my concern on the, was 21 of the contract?
Hmm, no. You keep that funny.
Did you say no?
No.
So basically, my concern was that, hold on. So basically, it's saying that if we accept federal funding, then we're going to be held to the standard because of somewhat grant money. So the problem, the question that I had was that if the state agrees to this, it's going to affect the county directly, and we're going to have no say in it.
Can we define the funds?
Pardon?
Can we define the funds?
Sure. I don't know what those provisions would be. And I can tell you that the only thing that I know of now that is in that category would be the vaccinations that we're getting.
Brian, if it makes you feel any better, we've already agreed on several federal contracts, you know, and we have to abide by almost anything I can think that could possibly come down the pike anyway. You're kinda stuck already.
Okay, so I'll move on. Next question I have is under the scope of work. So my first question is to you, Brandy. So is the scope of work being fulfilled? Since you're working with, you know, day-to-day on this?
I don't have any contact with the state of Nevada as far as these community health services go. So I'm curious to kinda go through them and see how they're providing these services, if they're providing them in the background somewhere with the state. But like, for me, I'm not in contact with them regularly for any of these services. Dr. Ross did send over the NRS that's associated with this just a minute ago, that says that in order for us to step out of this, you guys would've had to request that.
We, so when we went from the state public health to the county public health, there's, we would've had to ask for an exemption from this. Is how he's reading it. So he asked if the county asked for that exemption, and I'm not aware if they did or not. I don't think so.
So is it still applicable? Is that something we could still do?
I don't know. I would hope so.
From what I read, yeah. We would have to ask, I think, the governor's office for an exemption.
Yeah, because under the scope of work 1.8 invoices and updates, it lays out, they'll be providing monthly invoices. They'll provide biannual reports to the government's collective services provided for the county for public health services. Will provide necessary updates at county commissioner meetings, county board health meetings, and venues requested by the county. I can't even recall after having an update.
No. No, I'm not, no. I think they need to kinda go through all these and tell us how they are providing these services, 'cause they're not.
Okay. Let's get to practical stuff.
And I would want to see an audit of what they've provided in the past under this contract to verify that the county is receiving that level of service for the price that's being paid. I don't think that that's happening.
Well, Brisa's on the phone. She's the program manager, so she might be able to speak to some of that.
I think I got three of them on there. Brisa, Heather, and Nicole. Brisa's trying to talk.
All right, well, a couple things to keep in mind.
Hi, good morning. This is Brisa. Are you able to hear me?
Yes, one second, please.
You could table this, and we could look into it and bring it back. Although it's supposed to already be in effect, 'cause it starts July 1st. You have the 30-day termination, so you could also go ahead and approve the contract. And then later, if you wanna renegotiate it, you can, you know, with their knowledge that you have that 30-day termination. And you could hold that over their heads to see if they'll agree to the changes. So however you wanna do it, as a practical matter, I think, yes, we could look into it some more. I asked, federal stuff?
Oh, I'm, yeah, I was talking with you on the federal stuff. So go ahead, on the phone.
Good morning. My name's Brisa Virgin, and that's for the record. And I'm one of the health program managers here at Community Health Services. To answer your, you know, to kinda reflect on some of your questions, um, section 1.8, as you mentioned, the invoice and update. And really, as the county sees the community, you know, your communities having a need within the communities, so if you need support from us, such as flu clinic, or in the case of an splake or such, then this is definitely something that we would be able to, be able to coordinate with our nursing supervisor, Tammy. And she's definitely the first contact for arranging these types of services within the community. And as we support these services and such, then we also, of course, provide these reports and this. The invoices are sent monthly. And I also have a poll here with me if there's any additional questions as well.
I think she's saying if they were asked to provide any services, then they would give a report.
Yeah, I know. I'm having a hard time hearing the phone system. So, I mean, listening to Brandy, that works with them on a day-to-day. I mean, if we're in a contract that is not being fulfilled to what the contract is saying, my question would be, why do we need the contract? So I don't know. Our counselor basically said that we could defer the item and then maybe have staff work with Brandy to find out if it's something that she even really needed and wanted, and if it's not.
And to look into this NRS that we just received regarding exemptions and applying for possibly the exemption.
That's what I would like to see happen. What are your guys' thoughts or feelings about that?
Are we receiving invoices?
Yeah, they send us monthly invoices for this contract, 'cause we're already, we were already in it.
What do we do? What are they doing for us?
It's just a monthly payment that is associated with this contract.
Yeah, we just pay it.
So they send us a monthly invoice, and I think right now it's $506 a month.
And this is like $460 or something.
Or $16, 'cause this one's a longer, a longer term.
So honestly, so this is Brandy. I'm the community health nurse here in Battle Mountain. So I guess my question for you, is this contract saying, if you provide these services? Or is it saying that you're currently providing these services for us?
Hi, this is Brisa Virgin, and that's for the record. To kinda answer that, so this is really, these county assessments is something that is supported by NRS 439.4905. And these interloables are, you know, really established to be able to support these communities as they feed and need. And so this is really like, you know, if, you know, something happens, but these assessments, it's still a fee that is occurring on a monthly basis.
Okay.
That's what I...
But at present, this is Dr. Ross.
At present, Lander County isn't receiving
the services laid out in the scope of work of this contract. I understand that that allows for access to those services, but those are not needed, and they're not, they haven't been provided. What?
What did Dr. Ross say?
They haven't been providing the services.
The services in the contract.
They're not needed.
I can definitely defer to...
Hold on, excuse me, we have somebody talking.
I think he said that they're not needed, and they haven't been provided.
Correct.
Okay, go ahead, please.
Oh, sorry. I can definitely defer this to Nicole, who's our senior health program manager, and Tammy, our nursing supervisor as well.
What did she say?
To Nicole and Tammy.
So that's our thing.
I don't see Tammy, I see Nicole.
We'll maybe have staff get with you, Brandy, so we can just really look at it. Because, I mean, you deal with it on an everyday basis.
Absolutely. I'm totally fine with that.
And we're just seeing that if the contract is actually something that we need. So let's go ahead and defer the item. You guys good with that?
Yeah.
Okay, okay, great. Well, thank you on the phone. And we're gonna move on.
Thank you.
We're gonna jump two items ahead real quick. Just, I wanna make sure we get to them before Mike leaves. We're gonna jump to item 10. Update from our Public Works Director, Don Prince, including but not limited to past, current, and future... Public Works Director, oh, sorry. Yeah, Public Works Director, Don Prince, including but not limited to past, current, and future projects. Don? Yeah, sorry about that.
Good morning, Commissioner. Got a lot of stuff going on. I was over at well six yesterday. They finished up, they're finishing up putting the building around the treatment plan over there. We're hoping to have that online by the, sometime towards the end of next month. The Forest Main Lift Station going on out here at the Indian Colony. They were supposed to get the power, start working on the power last week, but they had some big other problem going on, so they had to reschedule. So now they're talking, it'll be the middle of September, I believe, they said. Third week in September, they'll be back to put the power in over there. But other than that, that's what we're waiting on over there. The crack seal project, we finished it up. Now we're doing the cape seal, and we're 50% done with it. And we're hoping to be done by the first part of September. Safe routes, it's an ongoing project that's looking good over there. If you guys drove around over here in the Echo Base section, it's looking really good. And then the auction, the public surplus auction. We've sold over $60,000 worth of surplus so far.
Good job, guys. It's nice seeing that yard cleaned up.
Yes, there's a lot of stuff, and we still got a lot of stuff coming in, so.
And that'll be a continual thing, right?
It is, yep.
So it'll just something that...
Yeah, right now, we're working on Austin's yard, getting it cleaned up. But as new things come up, we'll be able to put those on. And actually, whether we Kelley Blue book them or get a better price when we sell it, 'cause it is newer, as we take things offline, we'll actually make more money in the long run.
Cool. Is that your update, Don?
Yep, that's pretty much it.
I know we had some, well, the state did, with some road issues out Kingston Way. Did you go out there and look at that?
No, that was actually past the county line.
Oh, it was, okay.
Yep, that was in Mike County. It wasn't far past the county line, but apparently, they just put this culvert in. It was a heavy concrete culvert, and they had a gush of water come through there and just washed it out. You could still see the writing on the culverts. It was brand new, so, yeah.
I seen some pictures. It was kinda crazy.
Yeah.
So how long was the road down?
They had it open up to one lane that night, so. That's pretty hard to stick a culvert in when you got a water rush through. You gotta get a piece of equipment to hold it down, actually, when you're covering it, so it's hard work.
All right, well, are there any questions from the board?
I think, well, now we're in the foyer. There's a funky smell on the floor. What is that from?
The power company, Brian, will you open up my...
Well, yeah, so we're, well, that's our next item, so we'll keep the other projects and stuff.
I have this comment that was given to me on the road workout on the Hilltop area. It was complimented, how aggressive, basically, if it was at your direction, they went at it. The resident went into the hole and pulled down the road. He said there was about 15 dump trucks, and he said they scooted right through. He said they were very polite, professional. So like I said, at your direction.
This cape seal they're doing out there, it's usually a fast process, and it gets people in and out of their homes a lot faster, and so.
That's what the compliment to you was, was, I mean, it moved very fast, and they were pretty satisfied. They, of course, they didn't watch, you know, any information on going out that we talked about it, you know, that it's covered in the meetings, so on and so forth. So they were unaware when they pulled in their driveway. But no, they said it looks really good. Driving around out there, kudos for that turnoff that you guys installed. Very well done. So thank you, thanks for what you do.
What, any other questions? How is Hilltop? Did we finally get that opened back up and that all corrected?
Yes, yep. It's a, they had to remove, move the road, actually, from one side canyon to the other in spots, yes. There's a lot of water through there. You gotta drive up there and look at it.
Yeah, it's nice we've dove over the top.
Yeah.
Well, thank you, Don.
Yep.
Okay, we'll jump to item 11. Update from the Rec Center Manager, Sean Baker, including but not limited to past, current, and future projects and or events.
Okay, I'm gonna run through this, and then we'll get to that. Kathy, are you good with that? First off, we had a lot of sports camps this year, between wrestling camp, swim camp, soccer camp. In October, there's a diamond training softball camp. We've had no less than 40 kids in each camp, up to 60 to 80 kids in each camp. So it's doing pretty good. We held 18 swim lesson classes this summer, starting in April. We taught over 150 local kids how to swim. Part of the philosophy is, the more kids we teach how to swim, the less kids the guards have to save, right? So the more swim lessons we do, the more kids that swim. Easier for our job. We also taught Eureka Youth swim lessons. Eureka bust their kids over, and we taught them swim lessons. The Renown Fitness Court, the grand opening was the biggest one Renown has seen. Thank you, Brian, for speaking, and Patsy for showing up. It was very good. Ball Fest is in the Elquis Park, October 21st. We're gonna have pumpkin paintings, face paintings, and Scarecrow Building for the kids. Civic Center cameras are being installed. There, a couple cameras are backordered, but we should see that project done within the next couple weeks. So the week of, the September 4th, the Rec Center will be closed for our annual floor maintenance, just for that week. The Rec Center employees will go join with Public Works on different projects around town. I talked to Rita about the Austin Courthouse and having some employees go up there and help her with that. I know we're coordinating with Rick down there on getting that done, too. So next week, we are going to finish putting in the basketball hoops at Lions Park and the sports complex and pouring the concrete. During the week of the 4th, the strippers will be here to put in the basketball courts, along with redoing the Rec Center courts. But we are going to stripe the grounds for basketball courts with the basketball hoops. The tennis court is still scheduled to be done this fall, which the strippers will have to come back out to restripe that. But Honeywell's still scheduled to get that done this fall. The Austin sign is up and running. It is tied to the ambulance barn computer down there and my computer in my office. Once we get them trained down there, they'll be able to handle it. But until then, most of it's being controlled from the computer in my office, 'cause we know how to run the program. Any questions with that, Patsy?
No, I was just gonna say, my congratulations to you on the Renown opening. It was very well planned, and the competitiveness was really fun to watch. So, I'm glad Renown commented on that, because you did one heck of a job.
Yes, they, they were pretty good, and I think you guys, it turned out really good. It's actually a very good addition to our park. Um, back to part of the smell and the reason for the pool and the Rec Center, we're gonna get into an MB Energy update and some power issues they're having. So, MB Energy tomorrow is bringing in a portable subunit to hook up to town. Um, they will be taking off the substation by the Colt offline, um, anywhere between three days to by next Friday. There will be another power outage. Right now, they can't control the power in town, so we can't turn on all our equipment in the pool. So, we can't disperse the moisture in the room out. The dehumidifier, the computer in the dehumidifier won't allow bad power to go through the building. So, the troublemen have been running around trying to control power as best they can, but there will be a portable unit. We just met with Dan a couple hours ago. Uh, the next outage will be about six hours, um, and that's if everything goes right. So, there will be another outage between now or the next three days and next Friday. So, once I know a little more, and they are bringing in an extra portable unit, just in case. So, worst case scenario, if this doesn't fix power issues and the problem, there will be multiple power outages for the next three weeks as they convert town to a new power system. That's the worst case scenario. Best case scenario, the portable holds and it's gonna take them, they will be able to take the next three years to start swapping things over. That's the best case, because no one's going to know anything's happening. So, that's where we're at with MB Energy and the power and part of the reason for the Rec Center dehumidifier and stuff being done.
So, is it in everything on this side of the freeway, or is it everywhere that was?
No, it's just everything north of I eighty.
Does that include Hilltop too?
Nope, just the same power outage, same power issues. Um, this new portable, though, if it comes online, they will hook up more of town to run through it as they take things offline.
Okay.
What do you think for time for the power outage?
Four to six hours.
Four to six hours.
And will, I, once I know, I will post and get the info out, but right now, they know the next three days. That they will have the next three days to get it in, and then after that, it'll determine how far along they are to hook it up.
Any other questions? Any public, uh, questions or comments on the issue?
Ryan, I have one.
Yes.
Uh, is it gonna be during the day or at night when they shut us down?
They're gonna do it at night again.
At night? Be the same, ten to six, whatever?
Yep.
Just a quick question on the Austin tennis court, in case anybody's on the line, um, for an update on that.
We've, uh, went in, did some patching on it, and right now, they're in the process of putting in paint, painting it down, and it's actually sealing the concrete. And that's probably something we should have did a long time ago, because it is sucking the paint up really hard and we gotta get more paint. So, but it's, uh, they started on it, they're about a quarter of the way, no, they're not even a quarter, about an eighth of the way done. And so, but we're gonna get it painted, then after we get it painted, then we'll get the strippers back in and it should be good to go after that.
And I think it needs what, some new baskets too.
So, they have those. Um, so Rick's, uh, modifying something to make sure the new baskets go up properly. Uh, with the paint, though, does, they're probably not gonna be done for the weekend of September the fourth, so when they come back to do our tennis courts, we'll schedule them to do the Austin tennis court then too. For, to put the lines in, yes.
You mean for the pickleball and stuff like that?
Yep.
But it is scheduled, so it, it won't fall through the cracks. It'll get done. Just won't get done in September. It'll probably be
Be a little later.
Another month or so, so.
It's a lot of area to paint.
Any other questions?
John, thank you as well for.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're doing a great job.
My nephew came over, my nephew's dad came over to swing. He loved, well, he, he stayed with us for the weekend. He loved.
Yes.
He just listened every day to telling it, you know, when I walked in the door and tell me what, what they learned and.
Thank you. Um, and it's something that one of the Renown ladies told Brian, I, I mean, the Rec Center has become pretty much the focal point of a lot of events in town and community involvement. So, it is definitely a great facility and is doing great things.
And it seems like the kids are using it too.
Yeah, more and more.
I mean, it, it is see more and more usage of it, so it, it's advertised, we're just getting out, so thank you. I mean, it's, it's definitely a service that helps the youth.
Thank you, guys.
Okay, well, thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll be going back to the regular scheduled agenda here, so we're gonna go back to number three. I'm gonna read this item into the record, but then I'm gonna have, uh, JR Thomas, our vice chairman, take it over, and I won't be having any discussion on the item, just because of the conflict with my wife. She's volunteered with High Desert Education in the past, and there could be, uh, potential, she could potentially be working for Kim in the future, so I just wanna disclose that, and I will be abstaining from any discussion on the issue.
Before, before we do, yeah, go ahead and read it in, that's okay.
Yeah, so, for discussion and possible action to approve, disapprove renewing this, the lease agreement between Lander County and High Desert Education Association, located at three fifteen South Humboldt Street. This is a three-year lease ending on August thirty first, twenty twenty six. JR, you can take it over.
Uh, yes, I, I do have a disclosure, um, on that also, uh, because I have, uh, been involved personally and business-wise with Kim for some time. However, there, I have nothing to do with the school and no financial arrangements there. So, counselor, does that mean I can still?
You've disclosed it. I think you could still vote.
Okay, 'cause I, I have no financial or interest in that particular item.
Bill, let me ask you that. With, with what my stated, uh, conflict was, I should abstain from any discussion or voting on the issue, correct?
I think so, because you've got your spouse involved.
There could be monetary gain. There hasn't been, but there could be in the future, so, okay, all right. Just wanted to make sure. JR?
Okay.
Good morning. Good morning, question.
You, we can give us an update on it?
Sure, yes. So, let me, we've, we've been at this for about two years now, and we've been, we've been successful. We feel really good.
Where we've, where we've come for the last two years. Um, I've had several people ask me why we were coming in a year ahead, and I can address that simply by there, if there is or is not an appetite to extend the current contract, that gives us a full year to, uh, solicit and find a new location, if that was to come to pass, because we don't have an abundance of locations that would be appropriate. We wanted enough time as we were doing our planning for this next year to know if that was something we needed to address or not worry about. So, that was the reason we are coming in, um, this far ahead. Um, so, however that falls, that's, that's the reasoning. Um, we have, in our success, we have, we have had, uh, good opportunities to be of service to the community. Um, we have our coat drives, we've done food drives, we have interacted with the senior center, we've done cleanup days in the park. So, we have had good opportunities for the kids and the families to give back to the community, uh, which was something that we stated in the beginning that we wanted to make sure occurred.
Thank you.
Of course.
Do you have any more comment on the, uh, agreement?
I answered the questions. Um, so, under the page one of six, under the title, Lander County was authorized to lease properties to the nonprofit charity or civic organization pursuant to IRS two forty-four point two eight three five. Um, under that quote, um, I'd like to request, I, I haven't seen it, that the one A states that it's proven that there are five oh one C three. I'd just like proof that that's received.
I have, I have put that on file.
Okay.
The IRS correspondence was delivered.
Okay, I just seen, uh, uh, the, the initial submittal.
Yes.
Um, so, that is, and then Bill, on that one C, um, is it, are we in the legal obligation with that statement that it could be, this, that we can do what we're doing if they're providing a service that the county cannot provide? Is that a conflict with, do we have to put an exemption in for that into the contract? Because the way I read it is, are, are we, are we putting ourselves out there by providing it in the dollar? Or does it need to go to what we decide is a fair market value?
I don't think the fact that you've got other provisions would stop this sort of thing. I mean, if, like, let's just pretend we were Las Vegas and we have more than one hospital, and we're, you know, funding the hospital. Um, obviously, we can fund more than one hospital, because we could use more than one hospital. Same goes with schools, so I don't.
I would like to note that we are not a school. We are a membership association, and we do not define ourselves as a school.
Yeah, I was about to go into that, uh, as well, but.
And we do not have teachers. We have education leaders. Uh, the family members actually direct and, uh, guide all the activities that we do.
And then, under some of the contract on the maintenance, uh, is it, is it normal we do to where we cover, uh, I see the cleaning piece, would that, would that be a part of the contract that we always provide? If it was any service, if it was the, uh, Frontier Coalition or anything, if they were to use that building, would we provide the, you know, the maintenance, the parking lots, everything like that? Is that just normal?
Yes, for the county building.
And we actually do all the, all the interior cleaning. We do a hard clean on the building once a week, and actually just had a professional cleaner come in, uh, a couple weeks ago and do a little deeper clean. So, we do take, um, serious pride in making sure we're caring for the building. We also did install, we had, um, some parents, uh, get smoke detectors, uh, from the fire department, and, um, maintenance did just verify the, uh, they're all in good working order, so they're, uh, we have, we have done that as a service to the building as well.
And then, I was gonna ask, I, I wish Bert was here, this might be questions that we do have some time. Um, is our, is the fire system up to cold? Have we, have we made them, as means we got kids in there and, and adults as well? I mean, have we updated and made sure, so all state certified to make sure that the services, that that building for our liability needs to be provided?
That would be a question for Colt and Glenn, but I do believe that Glenn's gone over there multiple times, working on that.
Just fire systems are stated, you know?
Went through all of that.
I'm just asking to make sure on our end for liability purposes that, that we're covered.
And Glenn does come check fires.
I mean, does the state inspector come?
I'm not involved in that piece, but I know Glenn comes and checks all our fire extinguishers and everything, so, and the elevator's certified anyway.
Glenn is our maintenance guy.
He's maintenance for the county.
Can I request that, we check that to make sure that we're providing our requirements on that to make sure that, I, I mean, I, I, to me, the fire system's the biggest piece, not.
And that, that might pertain to all county buildings being utilized by nonprofits.
Definitely.
I know the preschool next to us, um, operates under the same or under similar
Okay.
auspices, so. And the VFWs across the street.
I'll get with Glenn, but I'm pretty sure.
I know that Glenn handled some of that just recently, 'cause they went through that building and the one next to it, 'cause he knows he has to fix, like, a storage where they have the cleaning stuff that didn't meet fire code, so the fire chief has been over there and gave him a list of what needs to be fixed and goes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, he's pretty on top of it.
Okay, that's all I have.
I've went on several tours there. Pretty nice operation.
We try to, to do right by the county and, and by our families as well and the public.
But, how many kids are going?
So, it varies from year to year. Um, things, there's a lot of kids that have gone back to public school, which we encourage if the families feel that's appropriate. Um, right now, we're expecting ten to fifteen this coming year. We don't start until after Labor Day. Um, we've had as many as thirty-two kids, and so we can ebb and flow and grow. Uh, families are committed to volunteer time within the association and within the community, so we have good support. So, as numbers grow, more families and, um, more people are brought on that are, are qualified.
Have you had thought, so when you first opened, you came out, uh, basically like first through eighth grade, correct? Or you extended some services?
Yeah, we don't per se have grades, but we do, that's, that's the age groups that they fall into. Um, most of those older kids have moved back into public school, and we support that, because that's important. Um, they need that, that interaction, so this year, we're tending to see fourth and under age grade kids, um, and so that's where the bulk of the kids are. Yeah.
But it'd be like an online service, but with whatever instructional person would be, it, it would, could be open to high, a kid in high school, the parents wanted to.
So, what we, yeah, so what we do, I believe the school district is still offering distance education. So, if we get kids that are, that are still, they're, they're doing their education at home distance learning, but they're not, they're not being homeschooled, but they're still doing compulsory, uh, compulsory work. We actually have a space designated where if the parents want them to come in and do their work, we are able to accommodate them, give them help, give them structure, give them internet, so that, the goal is the kids get their education and they get through the, the work. So, we do have a piece where we even, if they're still enrolled in public school, but in a distance fashion, that we, we support them as well.
Thanks. That's all I have.
Do we have any public comment on this subject?
I have a question.
What?
Um, oh, I'm, sorry. Um, just in conversation with some other people, we're kind of curious as about, um, if your facility and like Lander County Kids Club and Great Beast College, if those contracts with all of those entities, which are all in county facilities, if those contracts are all similar?
Yes.
So, your leases with them are all the same custodial services and maintenance?
We do all the maintenance on all the county building. We always have.
Okay.
And then, I believe they pay utilities. They pay utilities, yes.
State your name, please.
Oh, Carrie Stewart?
No, we don't do custodial.
Okay.
Um, in terms of the maintenance, uh, we fix things, you know, that go wrong
Like if something.
under the contract, but as to, maintenance also frequently refers to custodial services, you know, cleaning, and that they do themselves.
So, all of those do their own.
That's part of their current contract. Actually, their current contract and the proposed new contract, the only major change is the dates.
Okay. Um, that, it was just a question that had come up in several entities and we just, you know, I, I just wanted to clarify that, you know, that people were sort of being given the same fair shake and, you know, that we were doing the same for all of the different groups that were getting, um, services. And another question that came up was, um, is there space in the old courthouse for more than just, um, High Desert at this point in time that other, somebody else could go in and use?
I could speak to that. Um, there certainly, I will tell you, the utilities for running six furnaces in the winter is steep, but we have managed to fund, we start our year and every month with a conscious deficit, so we fundraise everything we need, um, to provide and pay for things the building needs, supplies, utilities, cleaning, and all that. That said, there certainly could be accommodations made, um, to share space. Um, I think that there's absolutely, we're pretty spread out. We could certainly consolidate a little bit. So, if there was a desire, it would be something we would be interested in participating, um, in an effort of good faith to share the building. With kids involved, I would certainly want to know who and what, and security. I do lock the building from the outside every day. The emergency egresses are all open to go out, um, but we do take security pretty seriously, um, just so nobody just wanders in. Um, so, we would be open to that. Just know, um, right now, we're comfortable proceeding, um, with our current obligations, but if the county had a desire to split that building up, um, we would be amiable to those discussions, for sure.
Just a little, just a little seed, it would be like a wonderful place maybe to find some mental health services to come in to our community.
So, if we did that, I would just want security.
Well, yes, but I mean.
Yeah, that would be.
Just so there's not co-mingling, because the bathrooms are shared, but I have, there is a space downstairs that's in a storage closet that is big enough for a bathroom, a toilet and a sink, that abuts the plumbing wall, so to install a sink and a toilet and create a separate space, um, that, that whole side could be served by one restroom or there's two restrooms. As long as we just were securing, we knew what to expect and, and to care for the kids.
So, more like an op, op, you know, availability for an office, Kathy, with, I, I mean, maybe this is something that where, where we're looking, had the discussion with the Frontier Coalition, not for distribution or that, but just to where they'd have a office and a, and a, a, a building to go to with the, you know, a professional office and that, to where if, if they're crammed there.
My concern, my only concern for that is the, um, uh, just from work, the security of that, um, and not having people wander around, uh, because you have, um, and I'm not, please bear with me, you have Triennians, you have all kinds of people from everywhere and from that puts a little knot in my stomach. Um, you had, that would have to be figured out how to, not that I'm against, uh, the sharing of it, yeah.
I was thinking of more for where they could do their professional, you know, just like more like an office space.
Kim, we've talked about the, the, well, she talked about the cost of eating in the wintertime and I think, that would be really nice if we could get somebody else in there to.
You know, the, you know, just, just some, just some easement more. So, I wasn't thinking of distribution or nothing.
No, yeah, no worries.
Not where people are wandering in, because it, it is kids.
So.
I mean, it's the same as a school, you know, our schools are secure, so you'd want that piece, but just something to help share, and give them some relief that, that might open up some room for them.
Yeah.
So, there, there is some opportunity down at the bot- in the basement level. There is a, at the bottom of those stairs, that, the short staircase to the basement, the second after you go past the men's restroom down to the bottom landing, that's space for a door. Um, there would be, uh, a possibility to put a secure door there. The ADA elevator is available to hit all three floors. We do keep that stationed and fixed at the top level. The bottom doors will not open when it's not at that floor, so that's just a safety issue, that we keep the elevator set and locked on the top floor, um, at all times. We do call for it at the lower floors if needed. Um, so, that said, just know that we would be open to those discussions and would want to make anything work that seemed to benefit to the community, so.
Is there any more public comment? Okay, we'll hear a motion.
So, I'll make a motion, um, for that we approve the renewing of the lease agreement between Lander County, Lander County and High Desert Education Association located at three fifteen South Humboldt Street. This is a three-year lease ending on June thirtieth, twenty twenty seven.
August thirty first.
August?
Thirty first, twenty twenty six.
What am I missing? Oh, is that where the?
Yeah.
It was amended at the beginning.
Okay. So, it's Aug-, I'm sorry, August what?
Thirty first.
August thirty first.
Twenty twenty six.
Twenty twenty six.
We have a second to the motion?
I'll second the motion.
Okay, motion been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you, Jer. I'll take over on items back on the item four.
Thanks, Kim.
Okay. Uh, for discussion of possible action to approve, disapprove, allowing Karen Jerry, uh, Fergenick, sorry, went language there, to first a bench and put in, put it in by Lions Park as well as adding two plaques to the bench. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Karen Jerry Fergenick, and Nolita Costalanos. And I'm just requesting that I would like a bench, uh, approved to be put into the Lions Club or by the Lions Park, um, on the side of First Street, if we could. There's already a bench on the, what's the highway there, that goes north Battle Mountain? But I would like, or I would just like to request one where we could put two family plaques on the, um, bench that have or were long-term people that lived here for a very long time.
So, so it has a, so there's the, which state route is that on, the one that runs right, you know?
Two oh five.
What is it?
Well, it's North East.
Four two one? Yeah, so there's a bench right there. Sorry, is that where you're proposing putting the plaques is on that bench or would you like to?
She doesn't want to buy her own bench.
They want it on First Street.
Oh, got you. Okay.
Yeah.
Across from the gazebo of Worth Nelson's.
Okay.
Yes. Colt.
All right.
Colt Nelson. Yeah. Get that wrong name, sorry.
Well, I'll make a motion that we approve the, for Karen, Karen Jerry Fergenick to purchase bench and put it by the Lions Park as well as adding two plaques to the bench.
I'll second it.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Uh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Thanks, guys.
Thank you, Larry.
I'm sure you have staff or Donnie or we'll get it all worked out and.
We'll put Pat out there and everything. I'll give a call.
So do I need to get back in touch with you?
You betcha.
Okay.
Yeah.
So.
Do you guys have a minimum standard for the benches or does it?
Probably something that matches restaurant one and some, so.
Sometime what?
That matches the other benches.
Oh, yes, right, right.
We'll take care of it.
Okay, well, I will get back with you then, um, at a time. I know I'm not, I'm leaving tomorrow, so.
Okay, whenever you get back in town, have Nolita get a hold of me or.
Okay, we'll stop in the office. All right, thank you.
Yep.
Thank you very much. All of you.
Okay, we'll go to, uh, item five, for discussion of possible action to approve, disapprove the reappointment of one individual to serve on the Public Land Use Advisory Planning Commission, Plu, Pluap, which currently has two openings. New terms are from July first, twenty twenty three through June thirtieth, twenty twenty five, and our one applicant is Mike Neff.
A motion to approve the reappointment of one individual to serve on the Public Lands Use Advisory Planning Commission. Um, the new term will be from July first, twenty twenty three to June thirtieth, twenty twenty five, and the gentleman's name is Mike Neff.
I'll second the motion.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. We'll go to six. For discussion of possible action to approve, disapprove the appointment of one individual to serve on the Lander County Planning Commission, which currently has two openings. New terms are from July first, twenty twenty three through June thirtieth, twenty twenty seven, and our applicant, and I apologize in advance if I pronounced the name incorrectly, David Catlisa or Catlessa?
So. So I'll, I'll motion to approve the appointment to the Lander County Planning Commission. Um, the new term will be July first, twenty twenty three through June thirtieth, twenty twenty seven. And the, the individual's name is David Culassa.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
And our thank yous to both of our volunteers for stepping up again.
Yes, thank you very much. Thank you, Patsy.
And then one is our new one, of course, which is exciting to welcome him to the community and on our advisory board.
Yes, that's right. Yes, yeah. D R said that, uh, our applicant for the planning commission was a gentleman that opened the gun store out here by the golf course somewhere, I think, so. Yeah. All right, so we'll move to item seven, for discussion and possible action to approve, disapprove the site license agreement between Lander County and Southwest Corporation, Southwest Gas Corporation. Now that, this was on our last agenda and there were some concerns about the timeframe, because most are standard county contracts are three years, thirty days out. They're asking for ten years, sixty day out, so, uh, back on here for consideration.
I do have people on the line for this as well.
Okay. Um, as you pointed out real quick, I'll just mention, we had this on before. Uh, if you look at number fourteen C towards. I'm sorry. Sure, if you look at fourteen, uh, well, I guess it's thirteen and you've got the crossouts. Thirteen C, um, the licensee can get out from under it for economic, environmental or technical, technological reasons without, you know. So, um, we don't have a similar out for the county. And again, it's a ten-year contract, not the usual three. Those are, those are, are still problems with it. I mean, I can come up with language. No one has asked me to, you know, to amend, come up with an amendment. So from what I can tell, this is mainly for the licensee to explain their position. I guess that's my main concern. There, there are other parts of it, I think are fine. Um, but the ten years and the, and the no out provision for the county. Because, for example, if we, for some reason, technology changes and we don't really wanna, uh, maintain that mountaintop anymore. And anybody thinks, so that can't happen, well, take a look at what we've just been doing with the TV district. Uh, yes, it can happen. Uh, so, uh, especially in a ten-year period. So those things concern me, but, uh, obviously you guys can choose to do it as you wish. I would, I would want the same out that if we, we decide for economic, environmental or other reasons, uh, to end the, the contract, we should be able to do that.
My thoughts parallel or DA's thoughts is just, um, we have a, we have standard contracts for a reason and it's just, I think this kind of holds us, it's a little bit firmer than what we actually wanted in the past, so I, I share those, uh, concerns as well.
Also, I don't think there's a hurry. My understanding is, isn't this contract in place, the current one?
Um, yes, but they're, they are under a deadline because they're putting additional equipment and new equipment up there and they have a certain timeframe. They have to do it and they have certain guidelines they have to stick to for the BLM as well. So they have an installation date set and they can't.
Do we know why they're insisting on ten years?
Well, I don't know if it's the amount of equipment they have, if that's why they're asking and because they're a big corporation. Sometimes a two-year or three-year is hard because it's gotta go through so many people with Barrick and Nevada Gold Mines. We have a five-year and then an automatic renewal with them. So we've been in one with them since sixteen and it hasn't been renewed or anything for the same thing for Mount Lewis.
Yeah, I would be fine with a ten-year as long as we have a fair out. That's right. I just don't want to be locked into something.
Something for technology.
Yeah.
Yes. So it, uh, somebody on the phone that wants to speak to some of the questions?
Certainly. Uh, good, good morning, commissioners. This is Anthony Patsy with Southwest Gas. I'm Associate General Counsel for the company. Um, I appreciate the opportunity to, uh, speak with you and address some of the questions that have been raised. Um, a- as it relates to the term, I just want to be clear that it is a ten-year term with two automatic renewals. Uh, the reason for the ten-year term is, is what, uh, the commissioners have identified. One, uh, it is a, a very time-consuming process for us to, to have to relocate if that is required. Um, so as, as a company, we appreciate the certainty of being able to know that we have that ten-year term, um, where we won't have to be removing equipment, identifying alternative locations and installing it on other locations. Um, in terms of the question about urgency, uh, as, and I apologize, I don't, I don't know who mentioned it. We do have an install date that has, has been tentatively scheduled for the twelfth of September. Uh, so we are hopeful that we would be able to have this agreement put in place so that we can proceed and, and have that done. Uh, part of the urgency is, is also access, uh, to the, the tower, uh, with the winter encroaching. At that point, there, there becomes a point where if we can't have it installed, um, in the next coming months, we won't be able to do it until, until springtime. So we are, we are hopeful that we can have this move forward quickly. Uh, finally to, uh, the, I think it was the district attorney, uh, questions regarding termination in section thirteen. Uh, that language, uh, I have gone through the drafts that have been circulated and my understanding is that was language that was already in the form agreement that was proposed. Um, if the district attorney would like to propose, uh, uh, alternative language that would address the concern, uh, about the county's ability to terminate, if there are change in circumstances, I'm, I'm happy to consider that language. Uh, but the, the candid answer to the commission's questions is why? Is I believe that that was in the form agreement that was originally provided top.
Okay, well, regardless of whether it's in the current agreement, I don't have that in front of me at the moment. If, I know that I did not do such an agreement like that when I last did these things, uh, at the beginning of the century. Um, but back in two thousand seven, two thousand eight, I know I did a bunch of these site agreements. Um, and we did have the normal early out. I appreciate their problem, um, and I, as we have done for other things, we've increased the length of time on the termination to say ninety days or something. Uh, we could easily also put in, I think elsewhere in this, if I recall, but I don't know right at this moment where, um, there's provisions for the weather, you know, that is the extra delays for weather and the time of year. But, uh, I would suggest the simplest way to do it would be to simply amend thirteen C. So it would say by either party, if the party determines that the premises are not appropriate for it, for its operations, for economic, environmental or technological reasons. Okay, um, if we just did that, uh, we'd be probably in pretty good shape. Problem also is, oh, there it is, yeah, it's got sixty days overall. So you could do that or increase that to ninety days. Um, you could add other things. I mean, I can think of things to do, but I don't know what the company's open on. But if you wanted to just have us redo this and simply change C, I think that that would be fine, but my, my concern is that it binds future county commissioners, uh, to this ten years and it, and you just don't have a way, if the technology changes or for some other reason we wanted to put something there, we're, we're stuck with this agreement.
Lakin, aren't you the one that's been going back and forth with the, the red lines? Um, can they not just approve this based on the conditions that we're going to change that section? And you give us language to Lakin that we can forward on to them to add into the contract for that, the buyout?
That would probably work.
You know what? Um, I'm, I'm fine with it.
I am too.
Do you want me to make the motion?
Yes, please.
Yes.
Okay. I will make a motion that we approve the site license agreement between Lander County and Southwest Gas Corporation. Will be one change on, is it thirteen C? That will be changed for either party that will be able to terminate that contract. If Southwest agrees to this, then, um, that's a confirmed contract for us.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Uh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you, gentlemen. Yes, and we'll take a fifteen-minute break.
Conference will now be recorded.
We're gonna get back to the agenda here. Um, so we're on item eight, for discussion, review, consideration and possible action to approve, disapprove the revision on acreage number twenty-three dash oh one filed by Janet Rhodes to combine APNs zero zero three dash one eight one dash five six, zero zero three dash one eight one dash five seven and zero zero three dash one eight one dash fifty-eight into one acre. Oh, sorry, into one point nine three acre parcel within R one single-family residential zoning district. This was approved at the Jan-, uh, July nineteenth, twenty twenty-three planning commission meeting with the following conditions. One, add jurats to the map for the appropriate state agencies to sign the Mylar. And two, reversion to acres to be recorded with Lander County Recorder's Office within two years of approval by the Lander County Board of Commissioners.
Good morning. Shall we not for the record? Um, so, uh, we have the agenda item is correct this time. Uh, so all three parcels are on there. Um, I did receive a letter from NDEP stating that they approved of the map, so that's all good to go. Um, and other than that, uh, it's up to you guys.
Okay, well, thank you.
I will make a motion that we approve the reversion to acreage number twenty-three dash zero one filed by Janet Rhodes to combine APNs zero zero three, one eight one five six, zero zero three, one eight one five seven and zero zero three, one eight one five eight into one point ninety-three acre parcel within an R one single-family residential zoning district. This was approved of the July nineteenth, two thousand twenty-three planning commission with the following conditions. And that's to add jurats to the map for the appropriate state agencies to sign the Mylar and reversion to acres to be recorded with Lander County Recorder's Office within two years of approval by the Lander County Board of Commissioners. And just for additional information, this is in Kingston.
Yes, so we have a second. Have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we'll move to item nine. We're gonna recess the Board of Lander County Commissioners and convene the meeting of the Lander County Liquor Board composed of the Lander County Board of Commissioners and Sheriff Ron Unger. A, for discussion of possible action to approve, disapprove the on-off sale liquor license for Bear Estabrook with Expotential Love LLC DBA, Austin Fowl Saloon. So we, uh, we heard this item on the last agenda and there was something not verbiaged right, so we're addressing it today to take business on. Everything checked out, Ron?
Yes, sir. Ron Unger, for the record, uh, everything checked out okay for those folks. Uh, we don't have any issues. I will bring up, uh, to the board that if you notice, it, it requires, uh, three years of, uh, uh, employment, past employment, and on the application, it actually only showed two years. We did the investigation on that and we found out that the employment for twenty twenty, uh, they owned their handyman business, but they couldn't work it because of COVID. So.
I did call the office and ask on that because I didn't know if it would make any difference at all, um.
Well, I didn't, uh, we overlooked that, Patsy, because of the way the, the numbers looked.
Okay.
Uh, and thank you very much for bringing that to our attention because we did overlook that. And, uh, when Patsy did make the call to the secretaries, we got right on the ball and we, that's what we come up with on that, so.
Thanks, Ron. Do we have a motion?
Yes, I will make a motion that we approve the on and off sale liquor license for Bear Estabrook with Expotential Love LLC DBA, Austin Fowl Saloon.
I'll second.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Uh, we'll adjourn the meeting of the Lander County Liquor Board and reconvene the Lander County Board of Commissioners. Okay, so we've already been ten and eleven. We'll move to item twelve. For discussion of possible action to approve, disapprove the appointment of one county commissioner to serve on the Nevada Local Justice Reinvestment Coordinating Council for the twenty twenty-three through twenty twenty-five meeting cycle. New terms will be from August twenty, or August first, twenty twenty-three through July thirty-first, twenty twenty-five. So who would like to sit on that board? We have to appoint one. Oh, man, I, I don't know. It's like, it's a new, it's a new, it's a new, yeah, it's a new thing.
But I don't know how often the meetings are.
Frequency? How often they meet?
I'm sure we can find out.
It's not on our board appointment list at all, so I don't know.
Do we have the time to get the information?
Well, we, no, we kinda, we should have had it done. Yeah, so it's.
You're overdue at the moment.
Pardon?
You're clearly overdue at the moment.
Yeah, so we need to, yeah, appoint someone for sure.
How often do they meet?
We don't know.
I don't think, very frequent.
Once in a while.
If, if it's evenings, I, I want, I can take the appointment if it's big time, I can.
I don't think it's big time. Art never really said much about it.
Yeah, we didn't even know he was on the board.
Right.
You could do it, Mike.
And then if it looks like it's too much, we can, we can bring it back and we can reappoint somebody, okay? All right, so I'll hear a motion.
I'll make a motion that we nominate Mike to the position of, uh, Nevada Local Justice Reinvestment Coordinating Council for the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-five meeting cycle, new terms will be from August first, twenty twenty-three through July thirty-first, twenty twenty-five.
I'll second the motion.
Real quick, that would be past my elected term as well.
Okay, so that's noted, if that happens, then, yeah. Okay, so we have a motion and a second, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Okay, we'll move to thirteen, thanks Mike for doing that.
Mike?
Yes.
Just for a little discussion on this, we did, or I did read that brief on that, and I would like to offer Mike an invitation that if he has any questions on this or needs any history, uh, as far as what the laws, because you're gonna be reporting the legislatures from the way I understand that, if you're special or long-term side.
No, don't, yeah, don't, don't read too much.
You're welcome in our office and we'll give you all the help you can.
Sign me with that later.
Yeah, yeah. All right, so, um, we'll move to item thirteen, for discussion of possible action to approve, disapprove two opioid settlements, first one was Walgreens Exhibit A in an amount of five hundred and eighty thousand dollars, three, five hundred and eighty, three hundred and eighty-six thousand and sixty cents, and TIVA Exhibit B in the amount of three hundred and eighty-six thousand, nine hundred and twenty-four dollars and forty cents, and authorize the county manager to sign.
I have a quick question, Brian, we've discussed a few of this on this, I'm noticing and reading on a, a lot of these settlements that are coming in, does it seem like everything has a, you know, class action suit against it? Does it put stipulations on it that make it almost impossible to manage with, with these settlements, or does it come in with some guidelines to do, I mean, do you know on this one? Some of them, that, that, uh, one that gets the banks, it, it's money that's almost unusable, what they, what they direct you to use and the paperwork to get the money, it's, it's total control of it and what goes, what reverts back, goes right back to the lawyers.
Right, well, I, I know, like, on this opioid settlement, some money that we receive, we use it for like education, I think the video that we made that we put out of the death of the, of the juvenile that we had in our local community was used by some of that money, so it's.
I, I think there are stipulations, but as long as you're using it, um, we discussed this, as long as you're using it with something that is similar of where you're getting it, such as we could use it as our community health, um, correct me if I'm wrong, and stuff like that in the video.
Yeah, we've used it for different, like, the Narcan and things like that that we've bought, but I've only had to do one report on it, it was very easy, but I haven't had to report our financial side of it yet, so I don't know how that is.
So, that's fine, as long as they, like I said, some of this has soul, extremes attached.
The, uh, the Narcan, that, that's handed out by our, our health.
Healthers.
Yes, that's something, did we ever go to the schools with that to make sure, like, all coaches and teachers have that, because, I mean, that could save somebody's life if they had it.
I think she supplied it community-wide.
Okay, perfect.
It's paid out over the, what, fifteen years though, so it, you know, it's not quite the amount, but you know, Commissioner, I, I appreciate what you're saying, because I, I think this board is a little bit gun-shy after the conditions that our previous governor put on us with the amount that was coming in, so I think we're just a little bit leery of what, but actually, this is pretty standard with, with what goes on.
They just ask that we, we try to use it for drug awareness and things like that, but.
You guys that do the work for finding the.
Real quick, um, it does have arbitration, just so you know, but all of these big settlements do, so.
I'll make the motion to approve two opioid, opioid settlements, Walgreens Exhibit A in the amount of five hundred and eighty thousand, three hundred and eighty-six dollars and sixty cents, and the TIVA Exhibit B in the amount of three hundred and eighty-six thousand, nine hundred and twenty-four dollars and forty cents, and authorize the county manager to sign.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Okay. We'll move into fourteen, correspondence, reports, futures, agenda items. So we will be looking at the insurance topic.
And the natural resource officer job description.
Yeah, um, and then, uh, just as a reminder, we only have one meeting in September, correct?
Correct.
Okay, and that is, what day?
The fourteenth.
The fourteenth.
Mike, we want to, um, start a little bit early and put that, probably not the September, but the October one, we want to be sure and, and cover our holidays, 'cause I know people are making plans.
Yeah, that's probably a good idea, so maybe.
Why not put it on in September?
Yep.
With what we'd like to do in November and December.
Anything else, guys? Okay.
Kathy, your input that on for the next meeting?
For what?
Uh.
Holiday schedule?
That and the cold issue, are we gonna?
Oh, yeah, the cold issue, are we gonna bring?
Oh, yes, I wanted.
On the fourteenth meeting?
Yes, please.
Okay, thanks Mike.
I'm like, what? Yes.
Okay, if there's no more, I'll move into public comment, for non-agenda items only is the public comment. Okay, I'll hear a motion for adjournment. Oops, sorry, Jerry? Sorry about that.
My name is Jerry Anis. Um, just a quick question, I came in after, uh, public comment and correspondence, has it, did you go over the Wild Horse, um, debate in September?
No, we didn't, we didn't go over that.
Okay, um, would you like an update?
Yes, please.
Uh, on, on September seventh, uh, State Senator Iron Hanson, uh, is going to, uh, debate a Wild Horse Advocate Attorney, uh, in Elko, at the convention center, I'll, uh, I'll forward, um, the information, uh, to you, um, and also, that, I don't think anything's gonna become of it, other than the fact that, uh, it, it's gonna, I think it's gonna be well-attended, um, and, uh, it's gonna get the situation more, um, more, uh, uh, public, uh, exposure. Also, tomorrow, uh, I know, um, Commissioner Waits is gonna attend the NACO meeting, and I'm hoping that, uh, they'll be talking about the fact that, uh, what started here with the, uh, declaration of an emergency, uh, with, due to overpopulation of Wild Horses, now has, um, I've got confirmed seven counties on board, we're hoping to get a couple more, so, uh, that'll come up tomorrow in NACO and then hope to, hope to, um, take it, uh, take it further, uh, on, on up the ladder to, uh, to, to the governor's office. Thank you.
Okay, thank you Jerry. Is there any more public comment for non-agenda items? Okay, I'll hear a motion.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Motion?
Second.
And a second, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Thank you, everybody.
Muted.